Thursday, March twenty-four, two thousand twenty-two, meeting of the Bellingham Planning Board. Uh, the person on the agenda is a continued, um, public hearing on, uh, prospect Hill Estates. Um, Amy, has the applicant properly notified the people for the record?
Yes, he has.
And, uh, to the applicant, uh, have you filed a notice of intent with the conservation?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, yes, we did. In fact, we had our first, uh, public hearing last night. And, uh, we're sort of, uh, parallel tracks now with the planning board, so we're hoping, um, the review will go smoothly, uh, and consistently with what the board is planning on reviewing.
So, um, what we like to do is keep this trial up, parallel track as long as we can, you know, get the process moving. Jim, um, those people in the audience, um, and the people here, can you give us an overview of what is happening with this and where we've come since our last meeting?
Absolutely. So you've touched on a little bit of it already. So, uh, since our last meeting, the board had requested that the applicant, uh, further notice, uh, properly to each and every day butters in, in both towns of, uh, Bellingham and Franklin, as well as file a notice of intent, and both of which have been accomplished to date. Uh, we have, uh, I have discussed with conservation, uh, their, their initial meeting, and it sounds like it is progressing, uh, well, uh, a good conversation last night. Um, the board is in receipt of, um, comments from our Board of Health Agent, Bruce Wilson, who's here tonight. Um, and you also have an updated package of plans, uh, that is also posted on the website. If, uh, if anybody in the public would like to see under Planning Board, under, uh, Proposed Projects and Prospect Hill Estates. Um, as the board is aware, and, uh, I don't think it's anything new, uh, with the board, they, the understanding is this is, uh, an application for a definitive subdivision plan that is the intent to freeze the zoning that, uh, was in place at the time of the original application for the preliminary subdivision plan. Uh, you know, that-
I'd have for the audience.
Ri- right. So, yes. So there, uh, our zoning, um, you know, evolves over time, and there are some statutes in place through master of law that allows for, uh, a landowner to, um, to hold on or freeze their zoning, uh, through certain steps. And that, uh, freeze of zoning allows for the standards that were in place at that time. Uh, one of which is, uh, you know, uh, at that time, there was a townhouse bylaw that was in place and, and subsequently removed. Um, and, and this, the applicant here has provided a preliminary subdivision plan and is working towards a definitive subdivision plan that would, uh, freeze that zoning or those standards, uh, in time. Um, you know, the, the conversation has evolved around, um, fulfilling those, those, uh, those marks in order to freeze the zoning, which would really mean that essentially this plan that you're seeing tonight is more administrative than, uh, material, meaning they, the, the, the act of, uh, the applicant is to propose this plan, uh, but perhaps, uh, potentially, uh, never actually construct what you see on that plan. Uh, however, nevertheless, the board does need to, uh, as, as you know, as the board, but just for the public's sake, uh, you know, the board does need to approach this plan as if it was to be constructed, because if the applicant does receive a positive decision, um, you know, the applicant has the ability to move forward for building permits. So it is in, you know, the, the town's best interest for the board to vet this thoroughly. Uh, you know, stormwater controls, uh, you know, proper subdivision standards, et cetera, which I know you guys historically always do and, and will do here.
Thank you very much. Before we go any further, I'd like to, um, ask the question of either, um, Jim or the applicant. Uh, I've received some inquiries from people in town that construction is already started in that area. If I'm not mistaken, that is related to Franklin Home, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, there are, uh, as you may recall, there are six lots that were subdivided along the frontage of Prospect Street, which is in the town of Franklin. And those six lots are available for construction, three of which, uh, received, uh, notice of intent or orders of conditions from the Franklin Conservation Commission, and were recently sold to a builder who is in the process of, uh, constructing three homes on the three lots.
Okay.
Um, it does, so at this point, there is no, uh, construction or activity on the Bellingham portion of the property.
What I'd like to do now is I'll turn the floor, floor over to you, and if you, any of your, um, associates could give us a brief overview of the project.
Uh, sure. Mr. Chairman, thank you. And I have with me tonight Rob Truax from GLM Engineering. He's the, uh, project engineer who prepared the plans for, uh, the project. So I'll turn it over to Rob, and, uh, if you can arrange him to do some screen sharing, he can put plans on the, uh, screen for everyone.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Lou.
Thank you. Mute. Do you want to mute, Rob?
Sorry, folks. Uh, Rob Truax with GLM Engineering Consultants. I'm going to share my screen so we can- So this is the project site. It's highlighted in dark green around the perimeter. As you know, this property is located off Prospect Street and Lake Street in Bellingham. The town line runs across the, your parallels Prospect Street to a certain point, and then it cuts out across Prospect Street. So you can see the area along Prospect, the lots are shown in white. Those were the A and R lots that were cut out of the overall property piece. So the remaining property is about seventy-seven acres in total. There is some wetland areas throughout the site. There's some over, uh, Lake Street. There are some rural pools on the site. There's some perennial streams. So there's numerous resource areas that the Conservation Commission is overseeing and reviewing in their process of the notice of intent. So the existing site, some of you may know it, some of you may not. This was the, oh, years ago, I guess it was a gravel removal operation taking place on the property out in the rear. So if you went out there, you'd find some areas that are just bare, bare ground with old sand areas. And it looks like some, you know, the, the younger group of, uh, entertained themselves out there with some dirt bikes and whatnot these days. So what we're proposing with this plan is to come in with a cul-de-sac roadway off of Prospect Street. This new roadway would be approximately sixteen hundred and fifty feet in length. The new roadway would pro- provide access and egress to twelve new houses. There are nineteen lots in total shown on the plan, twelve of them being on the cul-de-sac, and the other seven fronting on the existing roads, a couple on Prospect Street, and one on the corner of Prospect and Lake, and then one, four of them along Lake Street. The, uh, site would be serviced by onsite sewage disposal systems for each of the individual dwellings, as well as, uh, individual artesian wells. There's no town water in this area along Prospect Street or Lake Street to provide municipal service to the area. So the roadway goes in, it's a about twenty-six-foot-wide paved road, sidewalk on one side. We do have a wetland crossing and essentially located right through the wetlands area here, which, which is under review by the Conservation Commission. We have, uh, drainage system that consists of three open basins, and then one underground small recharge system. I'm going to just zoom in on the area of the subdivision, so people can see it a little better. A little clearer. So we have three open drainage basins. Drainage basin, first one's right along the wetland area here, second one on the opposite side, and then a third one down by the cul-de-sac. And then out at Prospect Street, we have a couple catch basins that are going into an underground recharge system right along the side of the roadway. So basically, well, the roadway, the way it slopes is, it comes in about one or two percent off Prospect for about a hundred, hundred and fifty feet, and then it goes down gradient into the site, low point being around the wetland crossing, and then going back up as it heads towards the cul-de-sac. So we pick up a lot of the drainage as you're coming in. We have one drainage basin here, and then we go across, and that picks up a second piece of the road, and we have another drainage basin on the other side, and then down by the cul-de-sac, we have a third basin. Um, the way the basins, what we looked at with the basins, they're all recharge basins. There's no covert outlet. They only have spillways at the top for the hundred years, something greater than a hundred-year storm event. They're elongated to spread out their groundwater recharges through the area. They're very narrow and very long. They're not very deep. They only store in a hundred-year storm. I think the deepest one is about three feet. The others are a foot and a half to two and a half feet. So we're just trying to get that groundwater recharge in the area. We are in an aquifer. Um, so we do want to pay attention to that, getting groundwater recharges throughout the site. We're also requiring that all the houses have recharge systems for the roof runoff. And those systems will be sized to handle a hundred-year storm event. And- So we're not, we're not requesting any waivers at this time. We don't, there may be some that come up as we go through discussion with the plan, but at this time, we're, we're not requesting any waivers for the site. So I think with that, um, going to be brief, that's pretty much an overview of the project. Um, we haven't proposed or shown any houses on the individual front lots. The majority of those, I think just about every one of them, would require an individual filing with the Conservation Commission for any house construction. So they would require a whole other review level for the individual houses. So we didn't really get into showing, you know, what's going on way over on Lake Street at this point in time, other than those are basically front lots, um, similar with what would be considered A and R lots. So you can see, we haven't really shown anything over there. There's a lot of wetland areas in that area. There's a river going through there, so there's riverfront areas to contend with. Any of the houses that get proposed would have work within a buffer zone or a riverfront area, so they would all require filings with the Conservation Commission and go under a separate review. So I think with that, you know, we can answer any questions anyone has on the project site, and we can go from there. I, I will tell you that just, this is a matter of housekeeping. We are going out there on April fifth to do some soil testing for the drainage basins.
Okay.
That's going to be witnessed by the Board of Health. We're also, I think, one of the conservation members, the chairman's probably going to come by and witness and do some witnessing as well. He said he'd show up that day. We are going to do a site walk with the Conservation Commission, probably after that, somewhere around towards the end of, middle of April, because they've continued their hearing to the end of April.
Okay.
The next hearing will be, so that's just to give you a little update of where they're at.
Okay.
Thank you.
Before we turn it over to the board for, um, questions and comments, Lou, is there anything you want to add?
Um, not at this time. I, uh, think we would like to get the peer review process going, and, uh, and I'm hoping that the board will, uh, allow us to proceed with the peer review and get some issues, um, on the table if we need them to resolve prior to the next meeting.
Um, then what I'd like to do now is offer to the board, and I'd start with, uh, Brian. Do you have any questions? I stopped Ryan out there a minute ago. I muted himself.
I muted myself. You're welcome. Um, just one question. With regard to the placement of the lots on through the interior of the site, I thought I read, but I could be wrong, but there were some comments perhaps by the, um, made by, uh, uh, title eludes me now, but the Board of Health, basically, that the, um, possibly some of those lots are situated in resource areas? Would you agree with that? And, and what's your response if you don't?
Well, no, you're correct. Yeah, the, uh, we were informed that your definition of lot is, uh, rather unique, and we weren't aware of some of the parameters of that. So there may be some reconfiguration of lot lines based on that to comply with the zoning requirement.
Do you, do you see that as requiring a, uh, sort of a wholesale change, or?
Uh, we haven't, to be honest, we just found out about it last night. We, we really haven't had a chance to look at the plan, um, today, but I think most of it has to do with, uh, lot, the first two or three lots coming in from Prospect Street.
Okay.
I think actually, uh, lot two and maybe lot thirteen. Um, other than that, I think we're, we're pretty much enough land area to do whatever we need to do there for the lots.
Okay. I have no other question.
As you mentioned there, Brian, is Bruce here from the Planning Board, the Board of Health?
Evening, uh, Bruce Wilson, Board of Health. Um, I did have a couple concerns that, uh, the first two lots coming in, um, the grading they show there is kind of steep. It's a big cut. Um, and the driveways are steep, and that, the grading that's shown there doesn't cooperate the driveway in there. So I want to be sure that, you know, they submit a proper grading plan, so we know the true impact on the, on the resource areas. I'm a little concerned on the, the first one on the right, like, I think it's lot thirteen, um, that they've got enough room to be able to do all of that grading and get a septic in, too. He's got an area shown, but it's, it's in, into the sloped area. You know, if they were to take, it's on the top of a hill there, if they were to take the, the top of the hill and regrade it, as long as we don't have any issues with groundwater, it's probably not a problem. It's just, you know, something to look at in the process.
Uh, Bruce, can I ask that, um, you documented your concerns to this board and the applicant and, um, the Conservation Board as you-
I, I, I had sent Amy a, an email and included in, in the, uh, in the email, but I can, I can forward that over to-
But as you, as you work through this.
Oh, sure. Absolutely.
Just keep us advised, please.
Absolutely. I'm, I'm going to be out with, um, the, the team on, like, was it the fourth or the fifth? Would you be looking at the drainage areas? And if he's got a little bit of time, he might want to do a little other exploration, just to be sure, you know, that some of these areas are what they think they are.
Uh, thank you for your assistance on that.
Not a problem. That's what we do.
Brian, any other questions that you may have?
No other questions. Thank you.
Yes, yeah, I got a couple. Um, on that road, you said it's twenty-six feet wide?
Correct.
All right. And then when it's coming in there, it shows sixty feet wide. That's from the boundaries on those two lots?
That, that's the right-of-way layout?
Yep.
The actual pavement's only twenty-six.
Okay. We- Thieving in scale.
Yeah. So when we did the, um, A and R plan for the roadway, we left a sixty-foot swath between those two lots. And then as you come into the site, it will go down to a fifty-foot layout.
Okay. Um, another question I've got. You said you sold the front lots off to a developer?
Three of the lots.
Three of them? Now, all these lots that, uh, with the, the town line goes through the lots, the developer applying for all the permits in both towns?
Um, well, we, I think they're, uh, the town of Franklin is the jurisdiction for the building permits, and the Conservation Commission in Franklin, uh, was jurisdictional for the order of conditions.
How about taxes?
Well, I don't know about taxes. I don't, we don't get involved in taxes. It's, I think the, uh, each party, each lot would probably get two separate tax bills.
Yeah. I was just wondering, because I know when I did stop and shop itself, Bellingham, we, we had a permit in both towns.
Yeah. We, we can't escape paying taxes until we die.
Oh, I understand that, but we also had a permit in both towns.
Yeah.
Uh, Jim, I'm sure you, were you looking at that if it hasn't been done already?
Yeah, we, we've had a lot of conversations with Lou about that via, prior to him, uh, filing for permits.
Thank you.
Yeah, a couple of questions, um, or concerns, I guess. I'm concerned about the detention basins being on multiple properties, access to them, things like that. Um, I think when we were looking at your, one of your preliminary plans, some questions about the road. Um, so traffic study, I want that to be addressed there. Those were, those are two of the concerns that I'm sure we'll be dealing with going forward. So that's what I have to comment tonight.
Um, yeah, I'll just reiterate Brian's comments about some of the lots need redrawn in the wetlands. That's my big concern, but I think it'll be addressed in a future meeting.
So I have a few questions, comments. So I guess the first one, if this gets built, is the plan to have the road be accepted by the town, or are you thinking it's going to be private?
Uh, well, I don't, I don't think we've gotten that far down the road yet. Um, we have, Jim and I have talked about a number of concepts for the property, uh, alternative concepts. And, uh, you know, I, I like to, uh, have private ownership for most of the projects we do, or private maintenance, especially for the detention basins, because towns don't have the resources to maintain them. Um, so as we get further along, uh, we'll be having other discussions about what other type of project might be feasible there. But, uh, for right now, the, uh, roadway would be public, I would say, but we would have a homeowners association that would maintain, uh, the, the basins.
Okay. Um, I guess the whole reason why I was asking that, so the basin design seems good, you know, based on, uh, well, I know it'll depend on the soil information, but I know you're proposing that underground infiltration system towards the front of the site along Prospect Street. I imagine the DPW will eventually review and comment on this. Um, but I don't think that they would, they will like that. I know I am not the biggest fan of, uh, roadways going to underground infiltration chambers. I'd much rather see that go to a surface basin. Um, that's me. Uh, so I wish that's on that.
Well, there is no, I don't believe there's any drainage on Prospect Street that we can tie into, but, but the soil materials, we did product testing up there, and, um, we, uh, we went down fourteen feet, didn't hear a drop of water, and you couldn't keep the water in the hole. So it's, uh, very, very permeable, uh, soil conditions. I wouldn't expect any kind of problem there relative to drainage for that small area there. But that's partly why we would have a homeowners association to maintain the drainage aspects of it, because, as I mentioned, most towns don't have the resources to, uh, keep them maintained and looking nice.
Understood. Um, I, my, okay, I, I, I understand where you're coming from. Um, I still hold the, my opinion, I really, I would rather it be a surface basin than an underground basin, just because with the underground chambers, really, you can, um, you know, you can protect the inlet of those. Once they get clogged, they need to be replaced, um, unlike a basin, which is a lot easier to maintain.
Sure, sure.
That's just my opinion on that. One other-
Rob, can we look at that as a, being a little swale area there, or no? For that location?
Uh, I'm not sure that it would. I, I'm not sure. I'd have to look into that. I mean, it is, it is a small area, just a small drainage basin.
And it's going out to peer review for stormwater as well. This is just initial comments. So we'll wait till, to see what they have to say, too. But the other thing, too, with that lot, is that one of the lots that's being built upon that currently in Franklin that has the easement for that underground recharge system?
No, no, that lot is not being built on. It's the lot on the right-hand side that's being built on.
Okay.
Yeah.
Right. Um, and then also, I think it was a Board of Health comment, too, that I'm looking in the email that just received, but, um, is there an easement that's going across the property?
Uh, well, there was, um, existing on the property, an old railway. It's called a wind socket, um, something, Milford Wind Socket Railway that runs through the property, um, through the lots down at the bottom, up and through the, connected to the town's property that they have right now adjacent to the property. But nothing's really, nothing's ever been built there, but they did have a railway reservation, thirty-foot-wide railway reservation there that's, we have since purchased. So it's, the site is a hundred percent owned by Wall Street.
Okay, perfect. All right. And then also, um, I noticed, too, that there's some riverfront areas in those, the lots sixteen, seventeen, or I think it's sixteen and seventeen. Yeah, lots sixteen and seventeen towards the front, and it looks like there's some in the back as well. Um, do you know, is there any flood zone or, uh, zone AE FEMA zones on the lots, do you know of?
Yes, there is a flood zone associated with the wetland through that area, like you just said, on sixteen and seventeen. And there is a flood zone associated with the other wetlands as well. And it pretty much follows the, uh, BVW line. It's not a, it's not a mapped elevation. We will, um, we will file with FEMA, and we'll, we'll file a map, a, a map, what I forgot, I think it's called a map amendment, so that they will, and we'll put elevations on it.
Perfect. I know, uh, DEP would probably comment on that as well. I know they're very touchy when it comes to FEMA floods. So-
We, we, we show it on the plan.
Yeah.
It's not on this, it's not on this one that I'm showing on my screen, but I, we do show it on the plan set.
Gotcha.
That would be appreciated.
Gotcha. Um, one last thing, too, and I guess this is for you, Rob. Um, for those basins, it, it sounds like there's most likely going to be some pretty nice sandy soils once you do soil testing, because there hasn't been any soil testing done on the site yet, correct? That'll be done-
There's not been any testing out in the back, only out along the street lots.
Okay. Um, so are those basins, I, it's kind of tough with the, uh, the PDF that I had, but are those basins in cuts or are they fills?
Um, so the, the one when you go over the crossing on lot eight, the bottom of it's at grade. It's not a cut. There is, so if you go out on the site along the edge of the wetlands, there's all, they must have, like, created berms to protect the wetlands back when they were doing gravel removal. So there's earth and berms along the wetlands. So I really just held the existing ground for the bottom, and then used the existing berm between that and the wetland area, and, and then graded it out on the uphill side going towards the houses. In the same, they're, they're not very deep. The one in the back near the cul-de-sac, that one's pretty much a grade as well, and I'm just berming it. My, I, I mean, I do have a concern. We do have to do testing in there, and I don't know where the groundwater is on the bottom. I mean, I'm probably only above the wetland by two or three feet with the bottom of the basin. So we do need to see where that water table is, because under the, under the conservation regulations, the bottom of the basin's going to be required to be four feet above groundwater. Not sure if you guys are familiar with that. I mean, under the stormwater management regulations, they only have to be two feet, but it is more stringent under conservation, and that's because it's also an aquifer.
Yeah, I, I got you.
We'll be, we'll be looking at that. We may have to make some revisions. We'll know when we get out there, we dig some holes. The one on this side coming on the uphill side towards Prospect over in here, that one's up a little higher in elevation than the other side of the site. That one is in a cut.
Okay, perfect. So, okay, I think, um, well, thank you for, for the clarification. I think that's all I have right now.
I have a couple of questions. Uh, have you noticed over the past several years, this board has been very concerned about protecting our aquifer? What are you going to do? You just mentioned part of this is in an aquifer area. What measures will you put in place to protect the aquifer? Because it's a natural resource and it's limited.
Right. So we did increase the water quality treatment on this site. Generally, we would only do a half inch of rainfall. We're doing one inch throughout the site. I have some out at the street, I put in a water quality proprietary treatment unit before it goes into the recharge system. And we are, and the reason I elongated the basins was because just to spread out the groundwater recharge rather than try and concentrate it at one point. So as you see, they're very elongated. So we'll just spread out the recharge and be a more uniform recharge back into the groundwater.
Okay. A second question, you've mentioned a couple of times. And for those people in the audience, what do you mean by the road has to go over wetlands?
Over, excuse me, say that again?
I believe you said some of the the road may have to go over or encroach wetlands.
Correct.
Can you clarify what that will mean for the audience?
Sure. I'll give you a little blow up of it.
Thank you.
So this is where the roadway crosses through the wetland area right here blown up. So right now, there's a cart road that goes through and there's a twenty-four inch culvert under it. And that's where they must have driven across when they were trucking out gravel. So what we're going to do is we're going to go through the same area. But we're going to make it a little wider to accommodate the roadway, and we're going to put a retaining wall on each side to limit the amount of wetlands that have to be disturbed. The total area of proposed wetland filling is five hundred and eighty feet. So it's very small in size. So we are putting in a box culvert. So we are, we are going to improve the actual culvert crossing to some extent than what would be under the Wetlands Act. Because that's around culvert, so we're going to provide a box culvert, which you can see over here is a little detail of it with an eight foot wide opening and seven feet high. And this is to conform to the stream standards for stream crossings in Massachusetts. And there's a, there's a ratio for the openness to provide enough open area that, you know, critters can travel through. And it would be a flow path for the low flow channel. So there will also, there'll be a gravel brook. Rather than do an open box culvert, we're putting in an oversized culvert and putting gravel on the bottom and creating that that river channel through the culvert. We're going to build that inside the culvert. So that's just to give you an idea, that's that's the type of crossing that we're putting in. And with retaining walls to minimize the slope by the filling.
Thank you very much.
It it is existing presently, so it's just.
And you're enhancing it.
We're enhancing it. Yeah, yeah, we, we'd be required to. We're required to enhance it.
Lou, earlier, you made a presentation, there are some neighbors, I assume. Have you had a chance to digest what the neighbors have said to you? And have you reached out to any of the neighbors?
Well, we haven't really, I've spoken to a couple of the neighbors on the Lakeview side. We've not had, and I've spoken to some people, some abutters on the Prospect Street side that are located in Franklin.
Okay.
And I spoke to one neighbor who was on Lake Street a while back, it's, you know, several months ago. I've also read Mr. Di Martino's memo regarding some provision for access out to Lakeview. So, you know, we're, we're aware of a number of comments from neighbors and abutters. And, you know, as we get further into it, we'll try to take them one at a time and see where they lead us.
Okay, that would be much appreciated. And right now, this concept you're looking at is to freeze the zoning. And you mentioned earlier, you're looking at some other options that you discussed with Jim.
Yep.
And I know we're doing, the Conservation Department's doing a walkthrough. We'll be talking about this again at a future meeting. Do you have any idea what these other concepts are?
Oh, yeah, sure. I mean, like, we've had dialogue previously prior to your zoning change at townhouses. I think I mentioned that I wasn't a big fan of townhouses, that I wanted to do a cluster development of smaller homes for active seniors, ranging from age fifty-five to seventy-five. And what I wanted to do was not permitted under the zoning bylaws. So I was advocating for some zoning changes, but we weren't able to get any consensus, I guess, to put something on the table for the town to consider, so. But mainly, mainly the alternative concept would be to a higher density with a, but much benefit to the town financially and offer a diversity of housing choice that the town does not currently offer to prospective homeowners.
Okay. I I thank you for your representation.
Thank you.
And, you know, you're above board and you're looking long term. Um, one last question before we turn it over to the public. Are you in possession of a document from Bruce Wilson?
No, we haven't seen any other comments. The only comment letter we have was Mr. Di Martino's letter that was provided to us a while back.
I'm sure Bruce can make sure you get a copy of that.
Sure.
That came in yesterday.
Okay, so we'll make sure you get a copy of that, just so we're on the same page.
We didn't want to disturb Bruce on his vacation, so we let him sit.
Okay. What I'd like to do now is turn it over to the public, if anyone has any comments. Jim, you see anyone out there?
I have a comment. This is Lynn's Cornovaca on Lakeview Avenue. I have a question, actually.
What number on Lakeview Avenue?
Sixty-nine.
Thank you.
Len, I just heard you, or Lou, I'm sorry, I just heard you briefly mention that there's going to be provision for access on Lakeview Avenue. Can you tell me what that means?
Sure. Well, you know, the, from a public safety standpoint, as you probably know, Lakeview Avenue is a very long dead end street, very narrow. If there was for emergency vehicles, it would be very difficult to get down there in the event of an accident or a blockage of some sort. The DPW director has indicated in a letter that he'd like to see some type of alternative access, secondary access onto Lakeview Avenue in the event of a I think last year there was a big water main break there and people at one end of Lakeview F couldn't get to their houses for quite a while.
That was right in front of my house.
Yeah, so I guess they're looking at an option that might include an emergency access out to Lakeview Avenue or something that fire trucks and emergency vehicles could get through in the event of an emergency out to the back end or whatever end is blocked. And right now, it's just, you know, a thought, it's something for us to look at potentially. And but it's not in, we haven't provided for it on this particular plan.
I I guess my my concern, and I'll turn it back, I don't want to waste people's time, is the infrastructure can't handle the traffic flow now.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right, you're right. It's a very narrow road. We wouldn't be, we wouldn't be proposing that it be used for regular, you know, access, strictly emergency access. So it's really kind of very restricted, just, just an option potentially in the event of an emergency or a fire or something where they needed to get to it real quicker than trying to get to it down the way that road is constructed right now, because it's really very narrow, especially if there was a snowstorm or something and there was a fire at the end. Good luck.
Yeah, no, I appreciate your time. As I say, I've been here thirty-three years, so you probably see a lot of me during this process. I appreciate your time.
Sure, thank you.
Ma'am?
Yes.
I can interject. Jim, can you give her an overview of what we did in regards? First of all, it wouldn't be a secondary, as we go down this path, a secondary means of access or egress. It would be properly termed emergency access only. And Jim, could you, could you give her an overview of what we did with the Bungay Brook project? And how we worked that out with the developer?
Sure, absolutely. And I think Lynn probably is pretty familiar with with these types of access. But what the board did with the previous project, and again, this isn't on this project at all, there is no access being proposed there. But what the board could potentially do for emergency access is gated and limited in D restriction and in condo documents that it's it's in perpetuity. And also design configurations where it may be, say, gravel or previous pavers or something like that to lend it, lend a design feature that it shows that, you know, it's not for everyday driving. So there, there's many ways that the board has tackled this. But we could definitely get into that when, if.
We'll look at that, we'll look, you know, we'll take your comments, obviously, as part of the discussion.
I appreciate your time, gentlemen. As I say, the infrastructure can't handle the traffic.
If it comes in, then we will, we're familiar with this process. And again, it would be emergency access, so it would not be secondary, if in fact it comes to that. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello?
Yes.
Mary Strahan with Mary Halloran, five twenty-one Lake Street. I'm a little concerned with the comment that was made about opening up the culvert, the new culvert that's being opened up for the waterway. And right across the street here on Lake Street, we have an existing culvert. Will that be expanded as well? Because the overflow, as it is, the parcel on Lake Street floods out from time to time with heavy rains. So if that culvert is opened up from, let's say, a two-foot culvert to a seven-foot culvert, the waterway is going to be expanded and flooding will, will take place. What's your take on that, Lou?
Well, I I don't think the culvert they're referring to is takes the water from this particular location. If I'm, if I'm, if I'm looking at this correctly, the culvert that you're referring to, what's that lot there, seventeen, Rob?
Yeah, it's the culvert that goes on the Lake Street. That's a, that's a different flow pattern. It's not the same as the one that's going through the middle of the site. And we would not be proposing to do any work on that culvert. That would stay status quo.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? So I think the next step is that we may want to request a peer review scope and fee structure for stormwater. Anything else?
Let's talk about traffic.
We can do traffic.
We requested a waiver for the traffic.
Okay, I I'm sorry, earlier you said, okay, that's the first I've heard of the waiver for the traffic.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, real quick. So, so the engineer, sorry, Robert, did, did mention that, you know, no waivers are requested. There was a waiver for traffic, and I believe there's also waivers for number of test pits being done. But I think conversation needs to evolve a little bit about how many test pits really do need to be achieved at that location. I did have a couple of quick comments, if I may. Yep, so, so just in accordance with, with Master on Law's subdivision, definitive subdivision for eighty-one L, I was a little confused how lots, sorry, I don't have the plan, pull it back up in front of me. I think it's sixteen through twenty and fourteen, maybe, those serviced by the the existing public way. How that falls under eighty-one L, but we could have a conversation offline with that. I just wanted to introduce that subject to you to get some thoughts going with that. As you mentioned, you're in a resource area for a lot of these lots. And I'm sure the conversation may have revolved around a percentage of upland for each lot, so ninety percent upland in town. So we got to make sure we do those calculations and we could certainly have our peer review double, double back on that as well. And if I didn't already mention it, basins, basins are to be on separate lots. So we need to make sure that we tackle that.
Well, yeah, I'd like to, you know, I would be asking for a waiver for that because, and as I mentioned earlier, we would be having a homeowners association maintain those. So it wouldn't make sense to sort of carve out individual lots unless the town really was going to maintain them. So we'd like to explore that option a little bit and see, see whether or not that's something that we can work out. If we're, if these are on separate lots, Jim, then who would maintain them, the town? Primarily, right? So.
Depends on, yeah, if it's a private road or public road, I think it would, it would be maintained all the same. It would just be on a separate lots. But, but, yeah, we can certainly have those conversations.
Yeah.
Jim, could I ask that you provide your comments to the board and the applicant? And then to Lou, obviously, we're going to have to continue this. Could you get us a list of the waivers you would like by our next meeting?
Sure, I think I did provide a list with the application. And happy to review it again to see.
I'd like to review it the next meeting.
Sure. Well, I think we continued our hearing with the Conservation Commission to the twenty-fourth.
Okay.
And you folks meet on the twenty-fifth, I think.
The twenty-seventh.
What, the twenty-seventh?
Yeah, you meet on the twenty-fourth, if I'm not mistaken.
I know you meet the next day after the con con, so it's kind of like.
Our meeting's on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah, so.
We have a full agenda that evening.
Okay.
I like to do, first of all, I'd like to go back to the request to do a peer review for scope and fee for stormwater. Brian, are you in agreement?
With the, with the peer review just for stormwater?
At this point in time, yes.
Sure. Jim, do you feel that any other scope should be added to the?
Stormwater is definitely the big issue for the planning board in terms of getting an engineer on board. As I just mentioned about that ninety percent upland, I think just having them double back and work with Robert to confirm that, I think, would be beneficial. Otherwise, I think we're in pretty good shape at the moment.
Keeping in mind that they'll also be reviewing wetland issues as well, so it's they'll be covering more than just stormwater for the Conservation Commission.
Right, that's a good point. You know, as, as the board had mentioned, we want to run concurrently with with conservation. So we'll be working hand in hand with conservation and our peer review engineer will be working with both scopes at the same time.
So Jim, at this point, we can put any traffic discussions off to the future right now? Based on what we, based on discussions and the waivers?
Yeah, I mean, I think the waiver request may be, may be valid. I mean, we're talking about, you know, a handful of homes here, single family homes. You know, that we could certainly request, or in the past, the board has certainly requested a traffic memo. So, you know, just kind of outlining the number of trips we're really referring to each, each day and at peak hour. And if if the board wants to vet that further down the line, they certainly can.
Okay, and just for the benefit of the people in this room and the audience, that letter or that document for traffic only relates to this concept in front of us.
Correct.
Everything we're talking about with regards to peer review is based on everything presented to us this evening. It's not any concepts down the road at that point. At that point, we, we view everything again. So for those neighbors who. Think we may, may not be concerned about traffic. At this point, we're looking at it on this concept. Based on the request for waivers. And we'll look at it down the road. Um. Do I need a motion for the, um? Peer review and scope?
I.
I don't believe I do.
No, I think we're good.
Um. Any other comments from the, um, public? Or the board?
Uh. Jim say that we need to discuss the test pits?
Yes, I think that can be, um.
I think they're doing the test pits April fifth, right? Is that correct?
I think we need to.
Other than the basin only. We can dig.
You're, you're doing the soil testing for your stormwater.
Right, correct.
And I.
Jim, Jim, what, what typically, two test pits per basin or three?
It's typically three in the basin, one in each lodge and then one every three hundred feet of roadway, I believe it is, um, so I think that's. That's the discussion really is. Uh, I, I think. Starting with the drainage and then seeing how the, the material. Is over the course of the property because. You know, the, the downfall of requiring someone to do, uh, a lot of test pits. Early on to a, a design that may or may not be constructed. Would mean that there's a lot of devastation to the existing forest, uh, so. If, uh. My recommendation would be to start, uh, in, in this manner, and then if further testing is warranted, uh, then we could, we could do that. Or request that.
Jim, what, what, what I'd like to do, I, I. Something I picked up on. Uh, if this plan doesn't go forward. I want to, um. Minimize, uh, any. Um. Needless cutting down of trees. In this area for test pits that may not be affected. So I believe, I don't think this board. Per se needs to discuss the amount of test pits. I think that's something Jim and the applicant can work out. To keep it to a minimal at that point in time. And then based on when we find out in April. Discuss it on the, um. May twelfth meeting. If we need to go do more, or we may have more information. Between April fifth and May twelfth.
Yeah, I thought. Sorry, yes, I agree. I thought the discussion was about the. Yeah, nevermind.
No, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I, I thought that the, um, when Jim said that, I just assumed it was, because I know. The previous project, there was discussions about a number of test pits in the basin, so.
Yep.
And I agree, in this case.
I don't want to disrupt the area more than we need.
No, I agree, I think.
And we heard that, you know, a month, a couple of months ago. From all the neighbors.
Yeah, I agree completely. I think, uh, yeah. I, yeah, I don't think that. Three test pits in each basin and.
Three every three hundred feet.
And one every three hundred feet is even a remotely good idea.
For your concept that may not have.
I, I completely agree, yeah.
So Jim, thank you for your input. I mean, we'll have to, we'll have to keep in mind the, what we find out, if the soils are consistent and sandy, as they discovered out in the front. It's, you know, unless we start to see significant changes out there, I, I think the two or three per basin would suffice for now. Well, we'll, we'll try to be as practical as, you know. As we can be. To this process. Between Rob and I, I think we, we can get a good feel and make sure that we have enough information to go forward. Okay. Thank you. So at this point, I would, uh, entertain a motion. For a continuance to, um. May twelfth?
So moved.
Need a roll call vote.
Okay, so I'll need a roll call vote on that?
You second.
Second.
You have a second?
I.
I, I, I. That motion passes unanimously to May twelfth. Do we need to change the dates on that?
No, I think.
I think I gave extensions, uh, previously.
Yes. I'll send you the paperwork tomorrow for the continuation for May twelfth.
Okay, and, uh, we'll make sure you get the doctorate. From the Board of Health. Uh, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. We still have to do. I appreciate the thoroughness of your application. And the response from your consultants.
Thank you very much, everyone.
And to the public, thank you very much. Please, uh. Continue to participate. The next one will be May twelfth. Next thing on the agenda is the approval of the minutes.
Um, we need to open and continue three fifty-three Maple Street.
Oh, you're right, excuse me. Uh, thank you. We have a, uh, we need to open the continuance. For, uh, three fifty Maple Street. They've, they've asked for a continuance. We recommend that also be continued to May twelfth. Jim, can you list all the reasons they may have the continuance?
Pardon me?
The reason for the continuance on Maple Street?
Oh, yeah, so the reason for the continuation on Maple Street, the applicant has, is in receipt of the peer review. Um, and have, has not had adequate time to update their plans and provide it to the board.
Okay. So in front of us, we have a request for continuance. On three fifty Maple Street from the Apple. Uh, I recommend a continuation to May twelfth. I'd like to. Someone entertain a motion.
So moved. So moved.
Motion made by Dennis, seconded by Brian. All in favor of continuing. To, uh, three fifty-three Maple Street to May twelfth. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. That vote, that motion passes unanimously. We have, um. Uh, approval of our May tenth, um, meeting minutes. March, that, excuse me. Meeting minutes. Interested if we could approve minutes beforehand? Have we all the chance to read the minutes?
So, Bill, I didn't see those in the Dropbox.
Yeah, they weren't in it. Yeah, I. Three o'clock, they weren't in there.
We will hold off on, I know we have them here, we will hold off on, uh. Approval of the medicine till our, our next.
Next agenda.
That will be, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, that the fourteen?
That is.
So we would approve, approve the, um. Uh, March tenth meeting on, uh, April fourteenth. And the Red Mill Covenant signing.
Yeah, I'm not sure, I need Jim's guidance on this. We, we do have the covenant, so if he could explain it. What we need to do.
Right, so you should, uh, yeah, the covenant in place for Red Mill, uh, should be executed by the developer. Uh, and there should be a, a sheet for five signatures. Uh, is that, is that there?
Um, it's page, he gave us page, um, page two of two, so there's not one for the board, but I can certainly get.
So it's, it's not, you're not on a time constraint, so I, what I would do is, yeah, just get the, the final page with the board. Uh, but I believe it does need to be notarized as well, uh, so I, I believe Larry, um, might be able to assist in that one. Um, and, uh, and then we'd hand it back to them and they would, they would record that.
Very good.
Can I just make a note? Uh, we're looking at a date, um. On the covenant of March. So we may have to change that, uh, that document to reflect it.
If I can get that, I was gonna get the other sheet probably tomorrow, if that works.
Okay.
And then maybe sign it next week if everybody could come in, if that works, I can sign tomorrow.
That'd be fine.
Okay.
And, uh, entertain a motion for adjournment?
Ju- just real quick, Bill, for that site visit for the other project, is that definitive? That's the definite thing?
I.
The site, the sidewalk.
The sidewalk is next, um. Saturday at nine o'clock.
Okay.
And you can do yours whenever, Brian.
I wanna, I wanna go with whenever you go.
Okay. At night.
The sidewalk. Uh. On the Mechanic Street at, um. Nine o'clock.
Should we?
You know, there'll be some traffic that day. So we need to be careful. If we have anything that's bright colored, we should probably try to wear.
I have extras, like the vests and trucks.
Okay.
Just saying.
Thank you.
In terms of parking, um, I suppose we'll park near the, uh. Whatever that is.
The old dealership?
Yeah.
We, we could definitely talk to, um. To folks in the area, I'm sure, I'm sure we could park in the plaza across the street, uh, any, any, any of those locations, I'm sure would be fine.
It's a grab there, it's right back for now, so nobody bothers.
I just wanted you to try to reduce walking back and forth across the street.
Oh, yeah, you get it.
On a Saturday morning. Uh, so we have a motion of Florida to adjourn the meeting. All in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I second that motion. For the record.
Brian?
Good night, Bellingham.